Before and kind of focus our, our attention and our discussions for the evening. So having said that, I'll be involved tonight and maybe not at succeeding meetings. But so the vision for the school district of Milton is we believe in opportunities, achievement and community for all. And of course, our mission to support that would be the school district of Milton, in partnership with the community, prepares our students for achievement and lifetime readiness by providing opportunities for all. So having said that, I will call to order the board of education meeting for Monday, February 27th. Please join me in a salute to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Donovan, are you aware of any changes to our agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second that. Thank you. Motion from Rick, seconded by Dave, to approve our agenda as we have it. Are there any questions? All in favor of approval signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That clearly passes. Minutes are next.
I will move to approve the minutes for the regular meeting held on February 13th, 2023 as presented.
Thank you. Motion from Dave, seconded by Jennifer, to approve the minutes from our previous meeting. Does anyone have questions on those? All in favor of approval signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you. Vouchers are next.
I'll make a motion to approve general checking account vouchers totaling $359,540.16 as presented.
I'll second that. So the motion is from Mike and we'll give Rick the second down that to approve the vouchers as you just heard in the amount Mike enumerated. Questions on the vouchers? All in favor of approval signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you. That clearly passes. Student council, gals, uh...
Neither are available.
Yep. We did have a, a last minute commitment from, from one for sure. So that we will look forward to visiting with those at the next meeting. Public comment, I have no one signed up. Rich, could you do a quick double check for us? Pretty confident that I didn't see anybody sign up over there.
No one.
Yeah. Okay. Very good. We'll roll past that. Which transitions right to Rich. Superintendent update your next Red Hawk highlights.
Yeah, I'll start with the Red Hawk highlights. This is the second board meeting of the month. Our administrators are going to give updates on what's happened here in their schools. Our elementary principals are not available to make the real parent teacher conferences while our elementary schools. But I'll kick things off with some notes that they had shared with me to make sure that I've mentioned. So this is on behalf of the elementary principals. Give me just a second to pull that out now since I got back into my emails. A few things that they wanted to highlight. State testing is coming up later this month. So folks are getting ready for that, for the students and staff preparing for state testing. The Milton Public Library is hosting our, our school district's art show. So congratulations to the students who put together artwork and to the art teachers across the district. It's also Music in the Schools Month. So we have coming up some spring programs at some schools and coming up in the coming month, and then some will be doing those things later on this spring. And then with all of the changing weather conditions that we've had, I want to thank our building grounds staff and outstanding work that they've been doing, making sure that our parking lots and sidewalks and everything are clean and safe for students and staff and parents. And lastly, I'll mention that summer school course information is coming up. It'll be on our website this Wednesday and registration for summer school starts on March 14th.
All right. Good evening at the high school. So it's always a busy time at Milton High School. But as we are finishing with the winter athletics season, big congratulations to several athletes who are competed or have competed at state tournaments. Hannah Dunk will be competing in the floor exercise at the state gymnastics competition that's coming up this next week. Gavin Marvel's competed in the, the rest, the, excuse me, the state swimming this last weekend. This last weekend, very exciting weekend. We had six wrestlers at the individual. If you're paying attention, it was quite tonight and Friday night, but they did well the whole weekend. It's Slava Matt, Alderman, Tyson Peach, Royce Melo, Aiden Sinclair and Natty Peach, all wrestled. And Aiden Sinclair, that's the state champion. Excellent, excellent weekend for the wrestling program. This past weekend too, had a number of our musicians, both vocal and instrumental competed this soul and summer contest. Academically, it's very busy. We're at the end of the trimester. So this is the last week of second try. So this is finals and this is the end of term. And so students are completing second try courses and staff are finishing their second try courses and getting ready for next week when we start third try, which starts next week. And also, the last, the last probably six weeks intensive, more intensive, we've been working with Chalk Talk. About half the junior class has been during our study flex period, have been getting ACT support. We're all in preparation for next Tuesday. So next Tuesday, March 7th, every junior in the state of Wisconsin will be taking ACT. So it's a big day next Tuesday. We're excited about that. We'll be having a pancake breakfast and for the students ahead of time, that would be happening before they take the test. But we're excited to see some of the progress. That's at the high school.
Good evening. At the middle school in teaching and learning, on our last PD day, we had a session that our other building colleagues participated well, but it was on flexibility and mindset about meeting students where they are at. And then we had some of our teacher leaders lead some technology sessions that were just really helpful to empower our teacher leaders to share the gifts that they have in the classroom. In relationships, climate and culture, you may have seen on Facebook, if you follow any of the middle school information, that there was a, the avid classes were doing a cereal box collection for the Milton food pantry and 732 boxes were collected. There'll be a video posted soon on social media, but they set it up like dominoes around the building, spelled out the word avid in the gym and had the boxes going down the stairs. We did have a staff meeting after school that day and I was worried that somebody was going to kick one of the boxes before the video time. It didn't happen though. We had our most recent recnet. We, the Milton News Polishin offered the Escape the Bake and that was very popular and highly attended by our students. And then that same thing was also offered to our families who attended our parent group meeting last week. And then finally, most recently, the polar plunge. That's always been a big thing at the middle school. And just over $6,000 were raised from our middle school group and we had four of our staff members either plunged or served as Chevron. So an extra little shout out to Mr. Sidemates, Mr. Basolia, Mrs. Brand and Ms. Frye. Thank you.
Just a couple of updates from Northside. It's exciting. We have our parent teacher conferences this week. So we rescheduled last week with the equipment weather. So Wednesday to Thursday night, Northsiders will be sharing artifacts they're learning. One big goal of in the Northside is promoting student agency employees. Our goal is always a hundred percent attendance, but again, kids sharing some of their learning and artifacts of learning throughout the school. So very exciting time. Also on Thursday, we're hosting our first kind of family mental health wellness awareness night for our parent teacher conferences. Our school counselor is going to help lead a session for interested families, just learning about what we can do to promote wellness and just overall reducing the stigma regarding talking about mental health. So we're looking forward to that. Then on Thursday, also want to spotlight our Hawk hallway staff. So again, as our school counselors, school psychologists and school social worker, really been working at using our panorama school data as well as our marks on our social emotional competencies on the report card, as well as attendance and opposite discipline data to make decisions regarding supports for kids. So we're kind of unpacking that panorama data right now and what can get new groups as we get closer to spring break. And then lastly, just to talk about our climate and culture survey. So every year in January, we administer a schoolwide climate and culture survey. We look at the results and set goals as a school leadership team. This last year is really focusing on teacher advocacy. So that's the belief that as a collective, we can make a difference and change the outcomes for students. We saw some improvements in that measure and excited to dig in with that team and talk about next steps to school.
We want to highlight one other thing. Two of our directors that are usually here at board meetings are out tonight. Ryan Rogos and Julia Gershinsky are at a federal funding workshop that took place both today and tomorrow. So they're out looking for ways that we can best make use of federal funding.
Very good. Want to transition over to your second half, Rich?
Yeah. The other item that we had in the superintendent's update is just an operational referendum update. And just wanted to highlight that for the last week, we had our information sessions for community members last Monday at the high school and last Tuesday at the meeting. We went through the presentation, got an opportunity to have a conversation about both the need for the referendum and the, both our district's financial situation and the status of public schools across the state and the proposed solution. We had some great questions and folks had some good conversation. We have coming up some parent group meetings at, at, at some of our schools. We have some sessions in March at some of the town boards in some of our township municipalities. And then also a community session at the gathered place. And in all of the sessions that we've had, it's probably got a little bit of feedback from folks. A lot of questions around what impact the referendum passing or not passing would have on students and staff and our schools. And then also what impact it would have on our taxpayers. A common question from the taxpayers is around that $1 million dollar increase each year in the levy for each of the next four years and around districts' no rate going up from $8.11 to $8.21 in the first year of the referendum. So those are some, some common questions or themes that we're hearing.
Any questions for Rich? Very good. Thanks, Rich. Three is last week, we had a joint HR finance committee. Rick and Mike usually get together before the meeting and arm wrestle over who's going to lead off. So I don't know how that came out, so.
Rick won this week.
Okay.
Yeah.
What? Yes. I'm just paying off.
On February 15th, the joint finance and HR committee met with representatives from key benefits concepts to review and consider restructuring the post-employment benefits. Meeting focused on the following items. Review of preliminary post-employment benefit plan goals. Examine current post-employment benefit costs. Explore post-employment benefit options available to us. And review of projected cash flows and costs related to holdup. The next joint committee meeting is scheduled for this Wednesday and the committee will review feedback from the benefits advisory group meeting, which will be held tomorrow. That was originally scheduled for last week, but it was postponed through the work. Any questions or anything on that?
Chris, did you have anything else that you wanted to share on the topic or Carrie?
Nope. Listening in.
All right. Pretty good. Thank you for that. Okay. Four is finance committee report and we will segue to Mr. Mike for this one.
Yeah. So in addition to the, the joint HR finance committee meeting that Rick just spoke about, the finance committee, committee met on Friday of last week, February 24th. Again, was rearranged due to the weather. There were various items on the agenda. First, Stephen Schatz gave an overview of the updated five-year capital maintenance improvement plan as well as the vehicle equipment replacement plan, both of which he will be going over with the entire board this evening. And please note that this is an action item. Next, Carrie Bradley went over the budget planning calendar for the remainder of this year and into January of 2024. She also will be presenting this to the entire board. Third, as you will recall earlier this year, the board worked voted to include $3 million in the total levy to prepay debt, thus saving the taxpayers over $1.3 million. This deficiency is finalized and ready for board action with the formal resolution. Again, that Carrie will go over later. And finally, the last things on the agenda were two petitions to alter the school district boundaries for the school district of Milton. The request was to change the boundaries to switch two properties from the Whitewater Unified School District to the school district of Milton. You will note that those petitions and district boundary map are included in board docs and we will be discussing those this evening. So with no further ado, Mr. Schatz, I turn it over to you.
Wonderful. Thank you for the lead in. As Mike mentioned, this plan was presented to the finance committee on Friday. We had a bit of a longer presentation presented to the finance committee. So this is a bit more of a condensed version, so feel free to hop in with any questions at the end. The way we always kick off the presentation is kind of talking about the process that we go through on an annual basis to really prioritize the list of projects to make sure that we are proposing to the board ultimately the highest priority needs that fit within our annual budget allotment to get these projects done. So we've kind of walked through what those processes and procedures were, and then we ultimately got to the presentation itself. So Carly trusted me with the clicker and it's working great. Thank you, Carly. So what we started off with is just a five-year historical look back at the previous investments made by the board for capital projects across the district. What you'll see when you look through those numbers is that we ultimately had a minimum baseline of a Fund 10 commitment of $700,000. And then we also had some years where we had some additional funds that were available to do projects. And we also were able to tackle projects at Shilberg Park and now Central Park through Fund 80. And one thing that I also highlighted that doesn't show up on the previous five-year look back is that in previous years to these shown, the funding commitment at one point was $350,000, pumped up to $450,000 and then it's been at the level $700,000 for, as it shows a minimum of five years. And in these slides, it also shows some of the larger projects that were tackled during those fiscal years. Then getting to the proposed projects for this upcoming summer. At East, we are proposing replacing the original gym floor. The gym flooring there is original to the, original, to the original part of the building, which is 1958. That is nine inches asbestos tile with the black plastic underneath. And that has come to the time where we have to take some action to make sure that that's a, a safe, playable surface for individuals down there. So this would be the basement project and replacement flooring. Flooring is similar to what we put in across the rest of the district. West, Harmony, Northside, Middle School, High School, Gym 2. So very similar product for which you've seen elsewhere in the district. At West, we would be proposing sticking with our flooring plan there to tackling more original flooring replacement. Again, it's original flooring from the 1966 and 1989 portions of the building. This would be an abatement and replacement flooring. Shown in the pictures there are what the original flooring looks like currently in the shape that it's in. And the picture in the bottom right is what it would ultimately look like and that's what we did last summer at East. One of the highlights of the new flooring that we put in is that it's a, it's an LVT floor, which is a maintenance free floor for custodial staff. It doesn't require annual stripping and refinishing, which is a huge perk. That requires a lot less manpower and a lot less, you know, time and material to do that on an annual basis, which is a win all around for, you know, purchasing and just, you know, hard to find custodial out to fill those roles these days as well. So moving to consolidated. Consolidated is the annual roofing project that we're proposing this year. All of our roofs are evaluated on an annual basis by our contracted roofing consultant who helps us prioritize what is our highest priority need. And that is the gym section that consolidated and the middle section there consolidated shown in red. Northside, two projects proposed, replacing the exterior gym doors. Those are original from the building 1993. I think that photo speaks for itself, the condition that those are currently in. We would be replacing those steel doors with FRP, which is a product that wasn't available at that time. It's a kind of a pebbly PVC finished door, highly abuse, abuse resistant aluminum frame. So that will be a great upgrade there. Second project there is upgrading our digital controls there. This would be the last building to come aboard our district-wide control platform that we use to monitor and control HVAC, major HVAC systems. That's a huge energy efficiency project to do and also just replacing original equipment from the building's construction. At the middle school, we are proposing replacing hallway fire doors, showing that photo and replacing the two original boilers at that building from its construction in 1979. That is highlighted or placed in that stance because that is a project that is to be funded by one-time federal funds, very similar to what we did at the high school boiler replacement project two, two years ago. At the high school, we are proposing replacing the original exterior door 39. Again, that's from its original construction in 64. Upgrading digital controls in the 94 and 99 additions that will bring the HVAC controls up to the rest of the building that was either newly constructed by the referendum construction or part of the renovation areas. So that brings our controls and the equipment that we use up to the modern standards that we have in the rest of the building. Again, an energy efficiency project as well. And the last project at the high school is replacing the cooling coils and will be for AC1 and AC2, which is again part of the 1999 addition there, which takes the large condensing units on the roof off from 1999. They're well past their useful life and putting it on our chiller loop, which we added to referendum construction process. So this was always a planned project, not at referendum construction time due to budget constraints, but it was always something that we were going to plan for in the future to bring these air handlers online with that shiller group system. Moving on to our district parks, two projects between Central Park and Shilberg Park. Project number one is replacing the flooring in all of the restrooms, kitchens and concession stands at Shilberg and Central Park. The photo shown there is one of the, one of the restrooms at Shilberg. The second photo is the flooring that we would be proposing to put in there, which is an epoxy flake flooring, much more resistant to wear also is a lot safer for athletes that would walk on that floor, which would otherwise be slippery. This is a much safer, cleaner alternative at those parks. And at Shilberg, we would be proposing finishing the playground equipment replacement project. If you're a follow, a few years ago, we replaced all of the, they removed and partially replaced the playground equipment at Shilberg. This is finishing that project by filling that one vacant spot that we had left between, in the bigger side of the playground between the equipment and the swings. Project totals we have, that just gives you a snapshot of proposed dollars to be spent at each location and a summary of the funding sources. Fund 10, $700,000, Fund 8, $80,000 and one-time federal project commitment of $898,750 for a project total of just under $1.1 million. One of these slides that I'll highlight too is the, the projects that are high priorities that ultimately got deferred to next fiscal year, next project list are the ones shown here, just to be able to meet the annual $700,000 limit. Some stuff has to be moved at to hopefully be part of next year's project list and that's what these projects on this slide show. And that is the end of the presentation.
Any questions for Stephen?
I have a question on the ADA of the bleachers. Has that been pushed back to premieres?
It has. So that is a great question. Glad you brought that one up. The bleach grandstand replacement project at the stadium is not as easy of a project for us to tackle as simply like removing what's there and putting in something that's compatible. We've been in conversations again now post-referendum with the PRA to help us update the stadium master plan because the whole project is, you know, I don't even want to say the dollar, but it's X amount of dollars, something that would never be feasible for us to tackle through a method like this. We're trying to get a master plan put together so that we can hopefully tackle something like that in bite-sized chunks so that we don't do something out of sequence or it gets in the way of what would ultimately be the...
Does that plan still look at what we looked at some years ago with the eight-track lane?
Yes.
Versus, yeah, everything at all in pieces.
Yeah. So like the, if you're going to have the lane track, which is standard for a district our size, we would ultimately have to move the bleachers back off the track, which then gets in the way of something else instead. So we have to have, you know, step one through seven.
So the thought is still there. I just need to see the ADA part of it.
Right.
About five years or whatever. A little bit of the fun there for some of it.
Yeah.
All right. Thanks.
Welcome.
Stephen, you mentioned the energy efficiencies. We've talked about that in the past.
Yep.
Roughly, do you know what the dollar savings would be under the base is roughly?
So I do know, like for example, the middle school boiler project, estimated like natural gas savings there from what was there now to what we're proposing is about $10,000 a year. We had the energy efficiency calculations done like three years ago when we had the chilling, the chiller plants planned to go into high school. And that without off the top of my head, it was, it was significant though. We've already actually received our focus on energy rebate money for that because it was a planned improvement. But I can't tell you that off the top of my head for, for that. But the control improvements, that basically takes systems that would run right now 24/7 in some instances for the lack of control for us to be able to run it during occupied hours only. So it's a, some of it isn't quite tangible to be able to put your finger on, but it's when we've done it at other locations, we've noticed a pretty sharp drop.
Okay. Another quick question maybe. Can you explain the bid process or how do we get the quotes or the bids from these projects?
So the larger scale projects such as like the roof replacement, the boiler replacement project go through, you know, our design and then are bid out by the architects and engineers and consultants that help us develop that project. So that's like a competitive bid process. The other parts of the proposed projects are competitively priced through soliciting quotes, getting different proposals through different vendors to ensure that we get the best price possible for what we're proposing doing, using the same products and materials, giving apples to apples obviously, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Stephen? As Mike mentioned, this is an action item. If anyone is of mind to, let's take care of this one before we transition to a different subject.
Another quick question.
Sure.
So when I looked at last year's five-year plan compared to this year's plan, and I get some things are going to adjust based on import, import since and stuff like that, but the consolidated roof was scheduled for '25, '26, '26, '27, it's like a two-stage? Is that, why did that get bumped up to '23, '24?
Our roofing consultant does his annual look at all of our district roofs in the fall. And then, you know, I meet with him to kind of look through what he found, what he determined our highest priority needs are and the condition of the consolidated gym roof and the condition of that center section. We're determined to have a pretty high dollar amount of repairs that we would have to do versus moving it up two years to get it just completely taken care of. So, you know, for example, we were looking at upwards of $20,000 worth of repairs that would have kicked the need to replace the full roof, maybe two years down the road. Or we could move the roof replacements up and tackle the whole thing. Now is ultimately what happened and I think the roof section that was originally called for this summer was a section of the high school that we were able to, pretty confidently say with the stuff that we've done, move that back here.
So I'll make a motion to approve the five-year capital maintenance and improvement plan and the vehicle and equipment replacement schedule, specifically the items, projects outlined for the completion in the 2023, 24 column as presented.
Mike, can I jump in real quick?
You can.
Sorry. One thing I did want to talk about was the, the vehicle and equipment part of it. The vehicle and equipment replacement schedule, just to hit on that real quick, is another item that we track. The district's fleet of vehicles are large-scale, high-dollar outdoor power equipment, cleaning equipment in that, you know... equipment, and that, you know, keeping track of the district needs and making sure that we can meet them, is proposed purchase of an additional seven, seven-plus student vehicle, which is a Suburban, to add to our fleet of vehicles to meet the needs of our, to meet the needs of the high school athletic and activities department and the needs across the district. So that would be the proposed equipment addition for this upcoming fiscal year. Just wanted to add that before that.
Which I'm glad you did because it is part of the motion, so.
Oh, perfect. There you go.
I think one thing that's important to highlight on that, on the vehicle that, what, what we currently use, and it's in, in the documents, there is a two thousand and ten Chevy Suburban that has over a hundred thirty-one thousand miles on it, and we've, we've lost confidence in taking that outside of town. We don't want students to get stranded. We want to make sure that, that, that our trips are safe. So the idea is that we would keep that vehicle because not only do we look at trading it in, but the low value in it, we'll keep it and utilize it in town for trips, and then the purchase, we do want to take the place of this one on our in-town trips.
I'll second Mike's motion.
Very good. Thank you. So a motion from Mike, seconded by Rick, to approve our capital maintenance and improvement plan and vehicle and equipment replacement schedule as outlined. Questions on the motion? All in favor of approval, signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Yes, Stephen, thank you so much for your organization and your well-thought-out presentation. Really appreciate that.
No problem. Thank you for your support.
I don't give a clicker.
You don't give a clicker? It was, it was pretty exciting, I gotta tell you.
No, no, someone else can control the slides. They require me to do two things at once, Steve. So we're ready for the next agenda item?
We are.
All right, and it's pretty straightforward. Annually, I bring to you a calendar around the budget, and it outlines when the board is going to be taking action or involved in activity around the budget. The, the, in the, in the board's docs, most of the activity is around the fiscal year twenty-four, the next year's budget calendar, and then we have one item in January where the previous year's audit and financial statements are reviewed, which we just experienced. And then the second date is the process where we approve our budget revisions. So just to quickly, I'm through these, now that I've gone all over the place, we start out with our budget projections, and our finance committee, we started early this year. Typically, those projections are in February. We started early. The board then reviews the capital and maintenance project plans. Preliminary budget will be brought to you in June, and that preliminary budget may be approved by the Board of Education, and that will become the budget that we present at the annual meeting. In, I have August twenty-eighth. Typically, closer to the meeting date, you, the board acts to affirm that date. In August also, before the annual meeting, typically that first meeting in August, the board is going to approve any budget revisions to the current year's budget, meaning the twenty-two, twenty-three budget, if it is on August twenty-three. And then in October, the letter is adopted, the board certifies a levy, and then as said, the auditors will come in January then to talk about prior year's budget. So this is an informational item and follows our typical planning pattern. Do you have any questions?
Carrie, when it comes to your transition out to a new person in, do we know how soon before that person will be hired and, and do you work with them for, you know, a certain amount of period and?
So we shall see. The busiest time in my world, and it's kind of our hurry-up-and-wait time as well, is when we're closing out prior year's budget because our fiscal year ends on June thirtieth. So there's a lot of activities related to closing out that budget, and they happen after June thirtieth. And then at the same time, the budget should be prepared and approved, but then there's preparation to prepare for the annual meet. So the, the date that I had requested was July fifteenth, so if someone comes in before that, that'll give us a couple of weeks of transition. And I'm taking notes on things people need to know, but, so there will be that window, and then I'm doing what I can to, to either get the work done so they can step in and move forward, or identify what needs to be done, and then key things about how higher things look. So this timeline would be one, one thing to work with.
One thing that, to that, our, our timeline for the interview process is that position's posted right now, it has a couple more weeks left while it's posted, and then we will look at the candidates and bring in candidates for interviews. If everything goes according to the plan, we'll get interviews taken care of before spring break, and then bring a recommended candidate to the board that first quarter of May in April.
Thank you. Very good. Any other questions for Carrie?
Thank you very much. Okay, we will move down to item C then.
Item C. As you had described, in the fall, the board approved the tax levy for debt service with an additional three million dollars to be able to prepay debt or defeat debt. As Mr. Hoffman indicated, we are ready for the board to take action on that item. So in board docs, you have a memo, and in my memo, we came very close to saving the almost one point four million as identified. If you look at the, what happens with this, our, our debt, outstanding debt principal is reduced by approximately that three million, and then we also have interest savings as well. The, the final summary sheet describes those savings for us, and we ended up with the savings of one million, three hundred and seventy-three thousand, one hundred and seventy-six dollars, and we have projected, I think, one million, three hundred and seven. So that is savings from avoiding the payment of interest. There is a very long motion in board docs. I kind of give you the shortened version down below. Did you have any questions, or do you want me to, to go further on explaining the, the details of the summary, or it's pretty much what we expected, and we, we have that savings for the district.
Yeah, and we just talked about it, the finance committee, the fact that prior action we took, levy money, this is the action, we can actually transfer money to make the actual, actually the debts. So if you're wondering, did we already do this? The answer is sort of, of course, we have to levy, to gather the funds, and this is the one where the actual payout from that will occur, and to Carrie's point, you know, one point three seven three million dollars interest savings is a pretty significant amount of money, so, you know, it's something that in the long term is a significant savings taxpayers.
And so as you kind of indicated, tonight is the follow-through on the decisions that were being made in October. Thank you.
Yeah. So I will move to approve the resolution authorizing the transfer of funds, establishment of an escrow account with respect to and defeasance of certain, of the general obligation refunding bonds dated July thirty-first, twenty-nineteen. I'll, I'll smooth this. There should be a credit. I'll second that.
Very good. So on a motion from Dave, seconded by John, as we just heard, to approve our resolution that would finalize our commitment to a debt defeasance. Any questions on the motion? All in favor of approval? Signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you. That clearly passes. We move down to D. Mr. Barry, I'm sorry.
Heret said that she thinks she needs that as a roll call vote. Can we roll call that?
We certainly can. I don't, I didn't think we did, but I would happily roll the train back a couple blocks and roll call both that. So on the motion to approve the resolution authorizing the transfer of funds, the establishment of an escrow account with respect to and defeasance of certain of the general obligation refunding bonds dated July thirty-first, twenty-nineteen. How say you? Dave?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Joe is yes. Jennifer?
Yes.
Shelley?
Yes.
Seven-oh, that motion clearly passes. Thank you.
Thank, thank you for catching that. But we do financial things that is not an uncommon expectation in the reporting that we report, so appreciate you catching that.
So we will move down to, did you say, Mr. President, D?
Yes, let's go to D.
And can we combine D and E, or do we need to talk about those separately?
I, we can talk about them together, but I believe they need to be separate motions.
Separate motions, okay.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Correct? Yep. All right. Charlie, as we're done, this project would be as well as we have researched. So what we have is there are two petitions, and the petition is from a person who owns a tax parcel in another district. They can petition to join, to move from one district to another or have that parcel moved. And we have received two petitions for those boundary changes. There are several ways that this can be done. The way, this one is done with an individual property owner making the request. There are other processes where you can have groups and so forth, but the first step is to get a form completed that you get from the Department of Public Instruction and complete that paperwork and give it to both of the school districts. And so the Whitewater Unified School District has received this request, and the request is for the property to move from their district to ours, and then we have a request to essentially accept, if you will, the property or move to, to have, to join the district or to deny. So that being said, both properties are located in Johnstown, and they are in, one is on Shrine Road and one is on Highway eight just past Shrine Road. So the committee looked at a different map and we tried to pinpoint properties, and when they came to the meeting, Charlie and I decided that this would also maybe be an easier way to process the information. So we also received a communication from Katie McQuillan. She is one of the owners of the property that is requesting to become part of our district, and she shared in her communication that she was aware of the committee's recommendation and that she hoped that they would, that the board would consider the property at forty-four, twenty-five North Shrine Road, and it is around the idea that they plan on building a house there, and so they would like it to be in the district before they build the house. The reason that they added the second property on Highway eight is that they have four children that attend our district, and they are finding the transportation, since they're open enrollment and we don't have a bus stop nearby for them to hop onto, is, has been very stressful in trying to get them to and from school without transportation. So if either of these properties are a place where the students live, then they would be residents of, if the district accepted them and the students live there, they would be residents of the district and then be entitled to transportation. This kind of my, the, the follow-up to what was shared. So the first property, as you can see, is indicated on the map, is Property One, and it is located at forty-four, twenty-five North Shrine Road, which runs north and south, and it is generally our boundary line with the Whitewater School District. So houses, generally speaking, on the east side of the road are in the Whitewater District, and for a stretch of the road on the west side, they're in Milton, and then other times they are in Whitewater, when you do that western boundary. The property that we're looking at shares a boundary with the district to the west, and, and as a path of travel, we do have a bus that goes down there, I believe as part of the process. And the assessed value of that property is twenty-six thousand, two hundred dollars, and the property owner indicated that they were looking at building a house there. Property two is on Highway eight, just east of Shrine Road, and it, it doesn't share any boundaries with us. It's, it's not contiguous in that there's a property in between, so it, it doesn't touch our boundaries, and it is also not in the path of travel of our current buses. So if it were to be approved, the bus would need to go down A and then come back to continue its route. The other thing that we talked about is that that property, if the board accepted the petition, would really be an island and not within our, our current borders, and the assessed value of that property is a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred So I think I've covered everything. I plan to, Rich, do you have anything to add?
I'm just, just one thing, a little bit of background information, especially for the folks who aren't on the, the finance committee, because this isn't something that happens very often. It, it happens at times, but it's somewhat rare that, that property owners will make this request. And in order for it to move forward, to, to make the change, both school districts need to approve. So if we approve one or the other or both, that doesn't mean that the change takes place. The Whitewater School District will also have to approve one or the other, both requests. And so I want to put the, the board members to be aware of that, and school districts address these types of issues in, in a variety of ways. They look at the, the particular situation and make a determination on if that is in the best interest of the school district or not.
Clarifying question, I don't even know if we asked this at the committee level, do the children involved live at Property Two?
Correct.
Okay.
And they're currently just using open enrollment? Correct. They attend our district and are residents through open enrollment. Okay. Which means that the parents are responsible for transportation.
The two, I think Carrie should have already expressed an interest in if, if Property One is approved and building a home at that location. There are four children in the district, and they'd prefer to be able to keep them in the school district.
And that's additional information that we didn't have in the committee.
Okay. How would bias come into play here?
They would have to get to an existing stop, and where they are located, there are not houses that have children that the bus is picking up. So I believe that they, they, they have to travel further to get to a stop. Even, even at Property One, if there was a home there?
If there was a home at Property One and it was in our district, then we would, they wouldn't be biased, you wouldn't have a responsibility to pick up.
Right, because right now, Property One is not in our district, then we would not, generally speaking, you do not, even though we have the shared boundary. I'm just gonna say, but. Generally speaking, districts do not stop at a property that is not in their district. We might be kind of, if you, if you look at the map, right, oh, you can see that, that road starts, you do the, in the Milton district, okay? And then, and then all of a sudden, we have properties on, on the west side of the road that are in the district. And as you go further, there's just a, a little bit of a line that is the, the property that should go down, and you can see, there's a little bump out, so that, that farmhouse when the district was created decided that they wanted to go to school and end up there. One of the things we found too is that some of the properties along there, the, the parcel actually crossed the road, and the farm fields were across the road, but you, on one side of the road and the house was on the other, and they were all one parcel, which might explain some of the choppiness. It, it's not uncommon for districts to have sections like this, and I think it likely goes back to when school districts consolidated, and perhaps people were given choices, is the story I have heard, of what district they would like to be in when they consolidated. And if the majority of your farm is in Whitewater, it would, that, that might guide a decision. But that's a little made-up history, anecdotal, based on how I understand things, it might be factual, but that's not uncommon with district boundaries.
I guess I'm not, I'm not a big fan of just redrawing the district boundaries in general. Open enrollment is the avenue in which you can decide if the kids to go to school X versus school Y. At some point, it could become arduous to have a lot of changes in the boundaries, and depending on who lives at any given property at any given time, the same property could be requested to go to or from, and may or may not have children attached to the request at all, based on some other reason, known or unknown to us. There's a certain ability to plan things with static boundaries, and then look at the future of where are we going, where are we headed, with being able to find what is the size of the district. And I guess I'm, just in general terms, nothing specific. Request to create an island, I don't think makes sense at all, but for the other, I feel like redrawing the boundaries in the district is a very significant thing, and I have no doubt I'm an advocate for it.
One of the things we discussed at the meeting, even Property 1, all of the properties on Shrine, I was going to say Shirey, but it's Shrine Road, are Whitewater properties for that section of Shrine Road. So even that one, it's not an island, but it's still, it's only touching Milton's boundary line on one, on one part of the property. On the north and the south, there's still Whitewater property, so. And definitely the one on A is, that would be an island, that one, to me, definitely. Don't understand that one.
I think with the, and we were not unanimous at the committee level, we kind of thought for a recommendation here, but I guess I, I kind of viewed it as Property 1 was easier for me to see, us including in Property 2, less easy with the island issue or whatever that's made. I didn't understand at the committee meeting that it's the same individuals with children that currently live at Property 2, and they would intentionally, or have an intent to build that Property 1, if in fact we would accept it. So to me, that moves the needle slightly. I'd be inclined to let 2, 1, and thereby create their path to join the district of sorts, and not have open enrollment. There are partly two, I guess. I don't see that as being helpful for logistics and transportation and whatnot, so. But at any rate, just to reiterate what Rich said, whatever we decide is on behalf of the committee, because Whitewater certainly has the dog in the fight here, or whatever, and whatever action they take, it may or may not render our decision to pay us. Just hope folks understand that.
So I just want to make sure I understand, they're going to, they want to build the house at Property 1?
Let me specifically see what it says, just, that's my understanding, but... Because we plan to build there in the next year or two. So in order to receive transportation, they would have to move up their timeline, but yes, they're planning on building a house.
To be clear, regardless of stops or not, we do have a bus route going down Shrine Road, correct?
I believe we have a bus that goes down, yeah. They might not be stopping anywhere, but they go, because if you have to, it continues further.
Technically, we wouldn't have to alter the route that we currently use. You mean, we might create, we might create a stop, but if the bus is traveling that road, we aren't going to drastically change the routing that we're using, is my assumption.
I think what I understand you saying is that if a house is built there, and that district is part of our property, we already have a bus traveling, so it would be a stop on an existing route, in the event that this property was district property and the children live there.
Got you.
Because they have to be residents, that establishes residency.
Jen Kramer works directly with school, and she's like that, and that's what she should, she should.
Thank you.
I guess I kind of, I mean, we're a big district. We're Washington area, we have a lot of boundaries with other districts. This is a family that wants to come to school. Maybe we should do what we can to help them. I get that it's changing the boundary, but our boundary is huge, so I guess I'd be in favor of approving 1, Property 1.
I just have one more again, just to make sure that I'm seeing it clearly as well. So there are homes on the west side of the road that are in the district, correct?
Just not that specific.
Yeah, just not that, right. So again, so there are definitely houses on that road, on the west side of the road that are in the district.
I have to be cautious, because there are tax parcels and addresses, whether or not there's a house.
Okay, that's, that's very...
Because when you go out in the, in the country, the barn is still there and the house.
Yeah, that's, that's...
Because it's on the side, so I don't want to overstate, but, but there's a stretch where the parcels are, are Whitewater, and as we had talked about, there is around that 34, 39. It looks like our boundary goes to the, to the road, oh, you were, you were there. Yeah, so if you go to the bottom of the screen, you see a little notch out before the notch goes back in.
Just that there are parcels on the west side of the road that are in the district.
Correct. I'm trying to show you an example of one that is.
No, that's, I just want to make sure that...
There's a stretch where there aren't, there's that bump out, and then, and then there's another stretch of Whitewater before we, again, go back to, the road is the boundary line, as you will.
I definitely approve, but moving the boundary for Property 1 as well. I do not agree with approving the Property 2 at all, because it does break the line.
I think about the efficiencies we, I wasn't part of it, but what the board did with the bus routes saved the district a lot of money. So to me, approving Property 2 would kind of take away from those efficiencies. I am in favor of Property 1. I'm glad the family is choosing Milton, and the other thing is, when they do build that house and move, then there's a house in that island concept, so I am for Property 1, but not Property 2.
Just to reiterate, of course, you know, Whitewater is going to have to approve or deny this request, too, and if the situation were reversed, you know, the other component other than children attending school is tax base. And as Carrie indicated, the current value of these properties, that would change, of course, if they build a house. But if we were being asked for a parcel to transfer to District X, there's a financial component that Whitewater is going to weigh, and I'm not going to speculate on what they will or won't do, but, but it's a, it's a tax reduction, or a reduction in their equalized property value for the, for the district. And, you know, when you talk about districts in aggregate, this doesn't move the needle, but it's a principle thing, and I'm, I'm wondering, you know, what their reception would be. But independent of that, whatever we do, is just dependent on what they do, and also, so.
On the motion to approve the petition to alter school district boundaries brought to the board by Paul and Katie McQuillan, requesting to detach 4425 North Shrine Road, Whitewater, Wisconsin, from the Whitewater Unified School District and attach it to the Milton School District.
Okay, just to be clear, he's indicating Property 1 in what we have just had for a discussion, so. So on that motion from Rick, seconded by Jennifer, to amending our school boundaries along the lines that Rick just identified in that motion, are there any questions on it? No other questions? I will proceed to vote, or proceed to call the vote, I'm sorry, and I will bounce to my other side on this side, if you will. So for a roll call vote to approval of the motion, I would ask Shelley?
Yes.
And Jennifer? Joe is a yes. Rick?
Yes.
Mike?
No.
John?
Yes.
And Dave?
No.
I call that five to two, motion passes. And in a related action, E, of course, is the same verbiage, but relative to the other parcel, what we identified as Property 2, and we will take a separate and distinct action on the petition for Property 2.
So I will move to deny the petition to alter school district boundaries brought to the board by Paul and Katie McQuillan, requesting to detach 12149 East, coming Little A, in Avalon, Wisconsin, from the Whitewater Unified School District, and attach it to the Milton School District.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion from Jennifer, seconded by John, as we just heard, to deny the application for changing school boundaries relative to Property 2, if I can succinctly identify it that way. Questions on that motion? I see none. We'll roll call the same way, and I will go to my right for Dave?
No.
And John?
We're voting to deny.
Right, motion is to deny, just to clarify.
Sorry, thank you for clarifying that. I would like to officially change.
Yeah, thank you. And John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And Rick?
Yes.
Joe is a yes. Jennifer?
Yes.
And Shelley?
Yes.
That is seven oh. We will deny the application of request for Property 2. And I think we will thank Carrie for her eloquent description of an unusual request of sorts, and excuse her, I think we are through that piece.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carrie. And I believe we're done with the Finance Committee, right, Mike?
Yes.
And D. Miscellaneous is the staffing report. There's an updated version with a late addition, if you didn't see the email, for your attention.
I make a motion to approve the staffing report presented.
Second.
Thank you. Motion from Rick, seconded by Shelley, to approve the staffing report as you see it in its updated form. Questions? All in favor of approval signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you. Any other gifts and donations are next? I'll move to approve the gifts and donations with gratitude.
I'll second that.
Thank you. John's motion, seconded by Dave, to approve our gifts and donations to the district with our gratitude. Questions?
Phil, before we move on, I just wanted to say thanks to the Consolidated Parents Group. That's a very dedicated group of volunteers who works hard to raise money for the school, as you can see by the list, so. Thanks to them.
Yep, here, here, I would echo that entirely. Questions otherwise, and in favor of approval, signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you for that. And meeting dates, Mr. Donovan?
I have a couple upcoming meetings. I'll start with the next regularly scheduled board meeting, that's on March 13, the second Monday of the month, regular time, 6:30 here at the district office. I do want to note that that's the only board meeting in March, because we have a spring break that fourth week in March. And then, it's not a committee meeting, but we have a benefits advisory group meeting coming up tomorrow, April 15, to talk about the posting plan and benefits with them. And then some, a couple committee meetings, we have a joint HR and Finance Committee meeting on March 1st, that's this Wednesday at noon in the First Floor Conference Room in the district office. On that same note, we have a hold the date, if needed, to continue that conversation, and that's on March 8 at noon also in the First Floor Conference Room. So March 1st for the joint committee meetings, and March 8 as if needed for that continuing conversation. We have some upcoming community information sessions that I've already shared and talked through, a policy committee meeting on March 8. We have not determined the time, yeah, the time will depend on if we need to hold that joint HR and Finance Committee meeting or not, so we'll firm up that time after this Wednesday's meeting. And also want to note that we have the, the state school association has Legislature Day coming up through the march, that's on March 22nd, and board members and myself are invited to attend our sessions in Madison for Legislature Day.
Very good. Any other questions about meeting dates?
I just have one question of clarification. So after the March meeting of the 13th, the next April meeting is the 10th, correct?
Correct.
And just for those of us who, whose tenure ends, March 13th will be our last meeting, correct?
No.
Or not?
April 10th will be.
Okay.
On April 10th, we certify the election results with the current board, and the board stays on, and the April 24th board meeting is when the new board members will get this one in and take their seats.
Thank you for that clarification.
That's all. We also would like to schedule an HR committee meeting. We have talked earlier with the HR committee about bringing back that around the set of information to the, to the HR committee by the end of March, so we're wondering about availability on Wednesday, March 15. We've done Wednesdays at noon in the past with some of our different committees, but we can look at what availability HR committee folks have on Wednesday, March 15.
I can do that.
You?
Yep.
John?
All right, sorry. We will put that in for noon on 15th for HR.
Exhausted, my agent.
I move with your...